Our agenda is basically to couple comment and there's no comma. So one of the things we have to do this meeting is approve the minutes that we went over the last meeting. So there should be no questions about it. They're all signed. All we have to do is have it officially in the records that they approved.
Is that what that was? I thought there were also other minutes that we didn't approve.
I don't know.
Okay. And do we have the quorum for those different?
I wasn't here for the last two meetings, so.
We're not anywhere near those minutes.
Oh, okay.
Where before I even joined the board.
I'm confused about this. We have minutes for May 4th.
Does it list who was there? It should list who was there on the minutes right here.
Yeah. Should what?
It should list who was present.
Let me see if we can.
We have a quorum.
So that you can, you can tell who wasn't there, so we don't vote.
If we don't have five people here that were there, then we can't approve the minutes. Is that right?
I think so.
Yeah, but have we all ever gone over the minutes? I'm a little confused actually about the situation because we have some minutes here that we did not go over the last time that need approval. And we have not actually asked if everybody has gone over the meeting, over the minutes first. So they should be looked at before we vote on approving them.
I might be able to bring them up on the screen. Is that what you mean?
To see who is here and then we can.
To see who is there.
How many minutes here on the, on May 4th? And the present numbers were Brian, Roy, myself, Kim, Bart, Sandy, and Boris. So we have.
Five of those here.
At the meeting, so we could vote on it.
We only have four though, because Carolyn wasn't. So it's just Bart wasn't there on May 4th.
Well, you said.
Yeah, Bart.
Oh, you, oh, you are. Okay. So we have five.
You do have five.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and Sandy, and myself. So we have a quorum. We can vote on it. One of those I was not, but.
You're pretty consistently. Committed.
Yeah, so.
Well, there is the assumption that people had them because they were all listed and if they're voting on it, it's because they read it or they're fine with what they saw.
You don't have to read them. If everybody has read them.
Yeah.
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 So you have to do that.
All right, well, I'm comfortable in voting for this. Is everybody else?
Which of the May dates is this?
So this is May 4th, 2023. Everybody comfortable voting on this?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor of accepting the May 4th minute?
Aye.
Okay. We have to also go over June 5th. Here comes, I think we did, we did list these over already. Had them for the last meeting.
I think we should just approve them all, even if we already moved them and then he can sign them.
They're all signed by Brian already.
What was the problem then?
I don't know.
What was the problem with the minutes? Why, if he signed them?
Does it say? Did you have your email up? No.
He said we reapproved some minutes we had previously approved. The good news is that that means everybody should have.
This conference will now be recorded.
What'd you do, Brad?
Five for 4th to approve, correct?
Which side?
We need five people.
Yeah.
Who were present for those minutes.
So I wasn't present on the.
So September 7th won't work because Brian's not here, Lee's not here. So it's David, Sandy, Bart, and Boris were here. That's only four. Because Roy and I were absent.
Oh, boy. You gotta mess things up.
Those don't need to be signed. Just.
Yeah, there we go.
And write approved or any changes.
We cannot approve unless there's a quorum.
Correct, correct. But yeah, so just go through and if you have a quorum for the minutes you're approving, do it. Any changes, just write them on there. We'll retype the minutes without the draft and Brian can sign them. Sure is.
Okay.
All right, so we have to take September 7th out. You can't do that one, right? We have, we don't have Lee, myself, Sandy, Bart, and Boris. Yeah, we've got them.
For June 5th.
I wasn't here September 7th.
You weren't?
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, it says absent. Excuse me.
Yeah, me absent.
Well, Boris, Bart, Sandy, and myself.
Yeah, four.
Four. No. Okay, so that one we can't do. We have September 21st. So I was here, Sandy was here, Bart, Roy again absent, and Boris was here. So that's another four.
That's another four.
So we can't, we can't do that one. So we have August 17th. Myself, Sandy, Bart, Roy, and Boris. So we can do that one. And Carolyn is there. July 20th. Myself, Sandy, Bart, Roy. Yep, okay, we can do that one. July 6th. Bart was absent. We have Roy, Boris, Sandy, myself. So that's four. So we can't do that one. Okay, so. Then we have June 15th. Myself, Sandy, Bart, Roy, and Boris. So we can do that one. Okay. So. So what we'll do is I'll mention each one of these minutes and then we'll vote on approving them. So there's Thursdays, August 17th, 2023, minutes for the Underhill Planning Commission. Thursday, July 20th, 2023.
Don't you have different votes for different people being there? Or it doesn't matter?
No, I don't think, as long as you have a quorum of attending.
At this point, why don't we just all vote whether you're here or not? Because you have decided, you have a pile of ones that we can vote on there. So let's just.
Right, we have.
Yeah.
We're only gonna vote on the ones that he decided we have a quorum for.
There were three.
You were asking if.
I just have to remember I was only there for a couple, so I don't want to be voting on the ones that I was not there for.
Oh, good point.
Let's do them.
So you could just listen.
There you go. Okay, back to square one.
Just a point of order.
We have done that one, I know.
Went down.
All right, one down. All right. So, okay, Underhill Planning Commission minutes for Thursday, August 17th, 2023. Everybody present here was present at that one.
Yes.
All those in favor of accepting these minutes for August 17th?
Aye.
Okay. Underhill Planning Commission minutes for Thursday, July 20th, 2023. Everybody present was at that. So all those in favor of accepting July 20th?
Aye.
Okay, that one. And then June 15th. Myself, Sandy, Bart, Roy, and Boris. So all those in favor of June 15th?
Aye.
Okay. So that, these ones have all passed.
So I just knew there were some that I was not there for, so I was not gonna vote for something I was.
Yeah.
It's just a point of order.
Okay, so also Brian, these need to be.
Need more people next time. See if I can stick you so you can say that. No.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right, so, okay. So Sandy, I think.
This topic is about the Farms of Underhill video and what we.
Hey, sorry Sandy to interrupt. Is your camera intentionally not on? This is in Galakia. Sorry to interrupt.
You can't see us?
No.
It says that it's on, but there was that weird thing about two meetings open perhaps?
Something up in the corner there indicating a stop or something up in the corner of AM.
No, she's just muted her mic.
Yeah, sorry to bug you. I just, I know we always show this on our station, so I was wondering where the picture was.
Yeah, we were, we had some problems with this and I'm not sure. It almost looks like we have two meetings up. What if we stop and restart? No, well, what she's saying is she's online, but she can't see us at all. Yeah.
So. So did you see something that showed like another meeting? I was curious. I didn't see that.
Well, when, after, when I was fiddling with Brad and we were sharing the screen, it looked like there were two meetings going on.
Down on the bottom, does that say share? And there's a line through?
Yeah, share had a line through the.
But that's for.
That's for presentation, for your presentation.
It's for presentations. It's supposed to be anyways.
Can you see me? Oh, there, now I can see everybody. Hello, sorry to bother you, but I just thought maybe you wanted the camera.
No, that was good. Thank you. I don't know what the deal was.
There's always something.
Boris has the magic touch.
I guess lucky.
Anyway, so we're talking about the, the video and since MMCTV sponsored it and found interns and whatnot, and Galakia is here to, to pipe in, we're, we're appropriate anyways. So what we had decided last time was that we would try to discuss ways that we might publicize this, promote it. You know, one possibility is to have some sort of town potluck and have this film shown as a, as a way to highlight that. And I guess I'm open to other ideas about, about the promotion of it. And then also the, the second part of that is trying to continue and get other farms into some sort of video film that way. So as you remember, sort of the whole reason for doing this sort of thing was to try to understand where, where we might be able to better support farms in Underhill. And through the videos, you know, there've been little nuggets of things that people have said about, you know, having trouble processing their lambs because cows are, you know, more profitable for the companies. Or having trouble marketing local foods, you know, when you aren't a well-established farm, that kind of thing, you know. So there might be some additional marketing that we could do, you know, on our, our website could have, you know, some, you know, local farm button and you could see all the local farms. And then if people wanted to support, they could do it that way. Or, you know, that, that's sort of the reason for trying to get into promoting farms and stuff. So what do you think?
I think you've got a pretty good handle on it and a good direction, basically. And I'm very proud of your organization of getting it all together.
Well, it's been fun.
How many farms do you have?
So we did four, which isn't a huge amount. There's, I don't know, over 30 in Underhill. I forget the exact number.
Oh, wow.
And I think we could, we could do more. The idea was to do it seasonally so that you see different things and people can relate to difficulties in the winter or, you know, what it takes to run a farm and what kind of products people have. So, yeah. So continuing it, I think, is a good way to include other types of farms. You know, we have blueberry farms. We didn't include any dairy and we have at least one dairy farm in Underhill and, you know, various things like that.
Well, the potluck screening sounds like a good idea. Is it, I have no clue how easy it is to get people to show up to something like that. Do you have any ketsup? I may go to it, but I don't know.
Yeah. The, have any of you been to the Sunday soup things that they offered here? No, I haven't either. Maybe that's an indication.
That's fall perhaps.
I think it was a winter kind of thing.
They've done it a bunch, but I've never been.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the Conservation Commission often has presentations and, you know, they'll get 20 people or ten, you know. And if it's a potluck, maybe it's a, you know, a family affair or something. If it's a, you know, a Sunday afternoon maybe, or something like that. I don't know.
So you're, are you gonna do, you're gonna do more than just the four that you've done? You hope to do.
Right.
Yeah, so you're gonna make the, make, but before you add more farms to the film, are you going to, is that when you want to do the screening or you want to wait till it's done?
No, I'd like to do it as soon as we can, really.
To develop interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, get some enthusiasm and all.
We could have the farmers there and they could answer questions or make contact with people.
Right.
Well, I'm willing to organize it if you think it's a good idea. Or we could just have an evening showing like a lot of the Conservation Commission things. I think a potluck would be fun. Community building.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, since your video is online and it's easy for people to watch it online, would they come up to a potluck to watch it, in many cases, to watch it again?
Boy, if people are, have watched it, I'm like, yay. I know you watched it, Bart, but, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, to sit down and take an hour to watch. You know, maybe a lot of people won't do it, but if you're, if it's a part of a social event, maybe it's, it's more fun.
What was everybody thinking about the potluck or the screening?
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
I'll figure out a date. Sunday afternoon? Does that sound like a good one? No.
You won't get the football fans on Sunday afternoon.
Yeah.
Is there ever a good time?
That's a good point.
Or Saturday afternoon for that matter.
Yeah, right.
During the week, it's hard for people to get here. Friday, they got plans.
Yeah, Sunday afternoon probably would be.
I think that probably would be best.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll try that. We'll find a date that, that might work, you know, in the next, I don't know, maybe three weeks from now, just so that it doesn't get, we have a chance to organize it and then advertise and stuff.
Right. Well, I mean, if you look at the Historical Society, when they do their blueberry thing, they get, a lot of people go to that. So, I mean, it's probably be a similar crowd, I would think. And they do that on.
Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon. Yeah, right.
Okay. Maybe I'll talk to somebody that is part of that and they might have some ideas.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you would do it upstairs, wouldn't you?
I think so. Yeah.
Sounds good.
All right. And then the second part of that is, you know, the next steps. I think there, there's some grant opportunities that I can look into. We could try to get the town to include it in its budget, although I imagine that might not be a, a big win there. Do you have any ideas, and Galakia, about how much it costs to produce that one?
I was very quickly doing some numbers before this call and we did it pretty leanly. I mean, we pay our high school students and I put in a little time and then another adult worked on it to help finish the editing. And I'm estimating we spent about 25 hours filming. Wait, 20 hours filming in total of the, like, three people. 25 hours or so, maybe 30 editing. And I was sort of like ballpark figuring it. And then mileage, we also compensate some people. I think it was like $800 to $1,000 maybe, like all the labor time to make that, because it was just to four different locations back and forth. And the editing always takes longer than you think. And I maybe have underestimated it, but I just did a quick, I can like really get in there if you're looking for the next one. But we tried to do it as simply as we could, like one camera, one of the kids was running around like getting what we call B-roll, like shots of the different farms and different things, a few beautiful shots, the landscape in some cases, like Erin Carroll, since he's a great photographer, he sent us a bunch of photos. So I think somewhere around there it is possible, but we did it like as quick as possible. We weren't going for like super fancy, super long time editing, elaborate graphics. We went for very simple. And I'm happy with how it turned out. And I just wanted to add one little tiny thing. Excuse me. For the promotion, I think that each of these farms probably has a whole bunch of networks. And I think it'd be great if you could ask them to pull in some people to the potluck, because if they got the word out to their fans, they would probably like to come and it would help them too, to have some promotion. But usually we find success when we tap into the other networks that are already there. And I know that Historical Society always pulls tons of people when they do stuff with the Deborah Rossin Library. So I knew, you mentioned food, but that's always a location that I've seen it packed. Yeah.
But if you ask Mount Mansfield if there are some students that would volunteer to work on that project, I would think that you'd probably get some volunteers, people that would enjoy doing that. You think that would be possible?
You work quite a lot with students, don't you? Are, are they receptive to volunteer, John?
I have been trying for a long time to get student volunteers who just stick with us and volunteer. And I've kind of, I don't know if it's just the last few years, but we kind of have to pay kids to work on projects and to follow through all the way. I don't know if that reflects on us, but I just feel like they're so busy and they're also trying to make money and jobs. So that's what we found. But there might be a history teacher or somebody who has a magic answer to that that I don't. It'd be great. And we're happy, like MMCTV would be happy to provide them with equipment and, and help them with the editing for free at our place. But we just happened to have the kids wanted to get it done, paid them, they learned some stuff. And it's kind of does cycle through our economy so then they can buy some food from the farmers too.
Great. Well, if it's okay with you, I'll write up some sort of a branch for the next parts. I'll look at some grant opportunities and we can talk about funding at another meeting once I've identified different possibilities. Does that sound all right? But you're basically supporting going forward.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Good, great.
Yeah.
Thank you for all of your help, and Galakia.
I'm so happy it got finished in record time. It was great. Sandy had a vision, did it. This part's done and I'm sure it'll lead to other great things. So thank you. And I'm gonna duck out now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Does she work for the school?
No.
Or is this for the TV?
She works for MMCTV, yeah.
Okay.
So it's the TV company, the community television.
Oh, okay. So every town has a community organization. Okay.
Yeah, so this one works for, you know, all of our recordings get posted on their site.
Yeah.
Jericho, and I think they do Richmond also. So it's just this local area. Yeah, there's a lot of interesting things on there if you poke around a little bit. Shall I go on to the next? Sorry to be like this old thing here. The next thing was talking about hydrology and I, I mentioned to Brian that I had sort of an outline of what we could do to inform ourselves and then get maybe some experts that could help guide us in the future. So what I'm gonna do today is really look at what we had in the town plan, what documents we have at our disposal about Underhill hydrology and flooding and that sort of thing. And then some, some possible avenues that we could look into.
So when you say hydrology, you're talking about groundwater and rivers and streams?
I haven't, I don't know much about groundwater and I think we have a section in the town plan about that, but I'm gonna deal mostly with surface waters.
Okay.
Yeah, it came up in regards to the environmental, the climate change stuff. So a lot of it was regarding flooding, I think.
Okay, yeah.
Now, see, this is where there were two screens. Yeah, and that little P is where you are.
The little P?
The bottom of the screen, the P in the circle with the.
Oh, this, yeah.
There we go.
So hopefully it's showing to everybody else.
What's the date on that one?
This isn't Underhill. It's just an example of the kind of flooding that we, we want to be ready for, really. So in our town plan, in chapter of natural resources, we have one policy that's specific about this. It's plan for and mitigate flood, flooding damage, public infrastructure, private property, and natural resources. So it's well within our, our plan to, to be working on this. And prioritizing it now just helps us build better resilience. So there's a lot, there's like 12 different strategies that we have. I'll go through them quickly here, but then I have some content that'll, that'll help us understand some of these. I'm not an expert, but I've looked into this a little bit so that at least I can tease out the differences between things. And maybe Caroline, you have experience here that you can lend. But so the first one is to identify flooding threats and then develop a process to mitigate harmful effects. And there's some good tools. And there's some good tools that that help identify where we expect to have flooding. Inventory existing structures in mapped floodplains, that's some of the work that Brad has been doing this summer to sort of remap. The floodplains, the sort of official floodplains, and then that'll help us figure out what's there that is potentially going to be damaged. Review the current flood hazard area regulations, this is something that the state has these regulations. And the towns need to follow them. Develop a river corridor management plan, this is something that we have not done and is an area that we might want to work on. Consider upgrade of the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund, this is through FEMA and the state and how much you get reimbursed for if there is a disaster. Require some native plant riparian buffers, there's some good examples of how much difference that can make in stream stabilization. Allow natural channel modifications, in other words, don't like. Put the blinders on the river so that it doesn't have an opportunity to flow in its natural state. Follow the municipal roads program, this is something that Brad and the town crew is working on where they identify segments of the road that. Are eroding or causing runoff, and then they try to mitigate those. Study the contribution of roads, bridges and culverts to stormwater runoff, and there is a report that was done that identified those. Key areas that we should work on. All new roads, road improvements and driveways minimize erosion. I suspect that's something in the road and road ordinance, don't know much about that one. New construction uses erosion control measures, stormwater control techniques improved. And the all hazard mitigation plan updated, and that was something that was updated last year, something that Brad worked on. So there's a lot of information there about ways to mitigate hazards. And then finally educate landowners about activities that impact crooks, streams and rivers, such as illegal construction, bridges. We spent some time talking about this earlier, about trails and and that sort of thing, so I think we've probably updated the bylaws. But then the other part of that is making sure people know what's in the bylaws, and that's something that I think we could probably work on. Some, you know, quick fact sheets that that would help us do outreach about a lot of these topics. So here's all the different documents we've got to work from. And some of them I'm not gonna look at at all today, but this is through the CCRPC is where our. Hazard mitigation plan is, it's part of the whole Chittenden County one, you can go there and look at all the details of, I don't know, it's a hundred and forty-six pages, I think. Whoops. The stormwater master plan, I am gonna touch a little on that, that was done just a few years ago, and it identifies some important things we can work towards. This is an environmental assessment that was done for the village of Underhill Flats. And I I had, it was mentioned briefly in our town plan, I think Andrew knew that it existed somewhere. And I found a copy of that, that's, it's really, you know, focused on one area, so it's, you know, maybe. At a different scale than some of these other things.
I got a question about that.
Sure.
Was that done because of us, the flood they had in the flats, or that's, or was that done?
No.
For a particular reason to to.
I think it was done to look at wastewater potentials.
Oh, okay.
It was done in twenty-ten, so it's, you know, quite a while ago now. And it it may include some information that'll be helpful for us looking at wastewater possibilities. So we'll keep that one in mind.
Okay.
And then there were two different geomorphic assessments where they look at all the streams and water bodies in our town. And try to give some indication of areas that are. Aren't stable, so that you can kind of work work towards improving that. And then there's this whole municipal road program, which is a whole nother thing, which I'm not gonna talk about either, but. So here's a bit of information that I thought you might be interested in. So mostly we're in the Lemoyle River Basin, so it it includes. You know, areas far, you know, in Greensboro, all the way down to then working into Lake Champlain. We're in this small section called the Upper Browns River. So when Brad is part of like this whole tactical basin planning effort. It's representatives from this large area that that try to keep all of our rivers and what flows into the lake. Clean, especially since we have some phosphorus problems in Lake Champlain. The other thing is that we have named streams, I think we talked about this before. And these are the ones that have the hundred-foot buffer area and different, you know, rules about these versus more. Intermittent streams. One thing I did find that was kind of interesting is that one of the river surveys mentioned this brook called Steinhauer Brook, which. I had never heard of before, but it's the one that runs right next to Beartown Road. And I think because of the kind of hazards that way, it might be something, I don't know who. Who determines that you have named streams or not, but anyway, some people are including that as one of our named streams. So we can maybe think about that. So in the stormwater master plan for Underhill, this is another map that shows all of those rivers that we were just talking about, so we have. This is Underhill, we have Stevensville Brook coming off Mount Mansfield, we have Clay Brook that also comes off Mount Mansfield. The Seymour River flows that way as well as the Settlement Brook and Beaver Brook. In the northern part, and then the creek flows down and then connects to the Browns River there. So all of these tributaries connect to the ma- main brown river further down. So a couple of things that they had included here was that, you know, the idea that the soils in a watershed really. Help determine the flooding potential. So the majority of the soils in our watershed have very low infiltration potential. I think there was something like forty percent of the soils were. Were in the worst category for infiltration, so that can just cause a lot more runoff.
To where is that?
In in all of Underhill, they're they're saying that our soils are not really well drained, which.
Which we know.
We know. But, you know, they they just have a way of sort of ranking them based on every, all the other soils, I think, in in the state. And so that in combination with our steep slopes, really mean that our infiltration is low and they're. You know, more apt to cause erosion. In the in the stormwater plan, they identified ten road segments that they think need some work. And they identified ten stormwater projects that need work. I think that the road crew has has been working on these right along, so I think, you know, hearing from Brad. What, you know, where they're at would be a good thing, because I I know this summer they worked on the Lower English Settlement. Erosion issues there, I don't know about these others, but they may well have already covered them. And then, so the the top ten. Stormwater. Areas are these, and the reason that they're identified is because they. They put a lot of sediment into streams, they identify in this report the amount of phosphorus, the amount of all kinds of other sediments that each of these. Areas put into the streams, and they also have done some pretty in-depth look at how to resolve them, you know, what kind of. Construction is needed. The only one on this list that's been done so far is what was done here at at the town clerk's office a few years ago. For, you know, creating a bio retention.
That that thing over there?
Yeah, yeah.
That thing.
That thing. Yeah.
So all these have been identified, but we've only done one?
Right.
Since two thousand, this was two thousand and eighteen?
That's right, that's right. And that was one of the things I was trying to get money through ARPA to do, was to tackle one of these things. I think there's state money out there to be had, I think the limitation is that our road crew just, you know, doesn't have enough time to put into all of these projects, or. Brad to, you know.
Probably a lot of those projects couldn't be done by the road crew, they'd have to be done by somebody who.
Right.
Has expertise in doing that stuff.
So what is underground storage, what's that amount, amount to?
Fire department's fail.
Underground storage, it's under, it's listed for.
That's that's how they think they could solve that one, by having some sort of underground storage of the stormwater.
Yeah, I don't know, I wonder how, I have a hard time visualizing.
Well, you can look in this report and they get into more details about it. But, you know, unfortunately, we had that whole sidewalk built right by the fire department. But this project wasn't included in all of that at the time, you know, it's those kind of things that you can think of afterwards, and kind of frustrating, but.
So what, so I just question about this, who, this was a study that the town, did the town wanted to do, or did the Chittenden Planning? County Planning Commission say you should do this study and we did it, or, and who paid for it and how's that all work out, you know?
If we go back.
This is from the Regional Planning Commission, right?
Yeah, CCRPC prepared this, they hired people.
To do it, yeah.
And I think the reason is because they're they're responsible for making sure all the towns have the information they need to take action to resolve some of these issues. Like sediment and phosphorus and stuff. So that's, I think, why it got done, and, yeah. So, you know, it might be up to us to work with Brad and and get some funds and, you know, try to get some momentum to to solve some of some of these issues. Okay, so changing a little bit to this big word, which basically just means it's the physics of flowing water and sediment in the watershed. So they, you know, eroding stream bank soils represent a lot of sediment and phosphorus pollution. And unstable river channels combined with riparian corridors and floodplain encroachments. Can result in infrastructure and property damage, so, you know, rivers. If you box them in, they they can, they'll go faster and deeper and cause more damage, and if you give them space to kind of dissipate. The damage they cause is less, that's my understanding of it anyways. So, looking at some of, I don't want to get too deep in this, but they have ways of measuring. The the actual meander width of things, I I would think, okay, the bank full width is here, right? But if you're looking at the the stream in tot- total. You have to accommodate for its natural meandering, every stream is probably different, the ones that are on steep slopes probably don't meander at all, they just go down straight. But when you get down to the lower valleys where the Browns River is, it it has some meander to it.
We got a good example on the Lower Valley Road. You know, that that that's the end of the Seymour River, and it's really eating away a whole wide section of the farmland there. Blinds around.
Yeah, and we have some examples in here too, which I'll show you in a minute. I thought these were good examples of erosion, this is from nineteen thirty-eight, and the the banks that are eroding. But then they went in and and put some. You know, some bioengineering, they call it, and did some riparian planting. So after three years, they have some vegetation there, and then over the long term. They've got some good stable boundaries of the stream, so that's the kind of thing. That we can work towards in areas where we might have some of this. I think, you know, down behind Browns River Middle School is an example where there's a lot of stream degradation down there. I think that's probably in Jericho. Another example of unstable versus stable streams. So if we look at those two studies that were done of Underhill, these were done in. The report was done in twenty-ten, but I think a lot of the work was really done in two thousand and five, so it's quite a while ago. So there may have been things that have changed, but what I wanted to show you was, these are. Really the only two areas that they had identified where we would need to do some work. And let me see if I can figure out where they are again. So I think this is the Mountain Road. Yeah, the Mountain Road, and what they've identified is that there's areas where there's some planting that could be done. Corridor conservation, more buffer plantings on this section, so they really identified areas. Where some riparian planting could be helpful to stream stabilizing, and the other place is. Oh, this is.
So that's Casey's Hill and and the Tomasi Field. On the right-hand side.
Like, right here, you mean? Pleasant Valley Road, Mountain Road, yeah. So it's that first bridge there that we know needs some work. Buffer plantings, you know. Yeah, anyways, you know, it might be something that the Conservation Commission wants to work on, or some other organization we could work.
Bless you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
There's just one question, please.
Yeah.
So the Mountain Road, they did a bunch of work a couple of years ago as far as like deferring it's like mainly they cut down a bunch of trees and dug the ditches deeper and all that. They, it doesn't sound like they're on the same page as what you're describing here. Because they kind of went up the bank and took quite a few trees out.
Along the river?
No, the Mountain Road, sorry.
Oh, just the road? Yeah. Yeah, there's like, there's several things that, that are working, right? One is, is getting the, the ditches stable, the rock, the culvert sizing needs to be right. And then you have the rivers themselves. So there's the roads and then there's the rivers. And I, I don't think that they're counter to each other.
Okay.
It's more a matter of looking at where the streams are and do they have good buffers? You know, is there vegetation? Are there constraints that, you know, maybe there's a bridge with walls that's, you know, pushing the stream in? Those are the kind of things there. So it's, it's river, it's roads, it's culverts, it's bridges.
But with the roads, the idea is to get the water off as fast as possible.
Yeah.
So that's why you're talking about the.
Deep ditches.
Deep ditches, so everybody has to.
I guess what I was drilling down to was like the, the slopes, like, for example, like a lot of the, there's steep slopes on either side of that road.
Yeah, they did the same thing on Stevensville.
Kind of go up pretty far along the, the slope and then there's nothing.
Nothing holding it.
Holding that part, you know, the ditches are good, it works, but, you know. That's why I said, is everyone aware of this? This probably gets a little bit dense for like the everyday road crew out there.
Well, one of the things that's on our list is to make sure that the road crew gets training that it needs so it's aware of all of those things.
What they do in the ditches, I think the use is crushed stone basically, which is a good sized stone, doesn't road obviously and it probably slows down the water.
You've got to remember in ten or ten years, you won't even see those stones. It'll all move around the end.
So it's like. Maybe a state that's recommending.
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah.
They're not just doing that.
Right, but I think like what you're saying is you have, you have the ditch, but then you have the cutting above the ditch.
Yeah, ditch is great.
Yeah, right. And like, you know, some of that is you don't want the trees falling in the road, right?
Right.
But it, it really is a trade-off, you know? The trees help stabilize the soil, so you take the trees away and, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
You probably know more about this than, than we do, but.
I mean, no.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have some work to do, you know, just making sure everybody's talking to each other, yeah. So this is an area which I'm, I'm trying to figure out. There's this Emergency Relief and Assistance Fund. It's through FEMA. The state contributes to it and towns, depending on what they do, what of their requirements they do, can be eligible if there's a disaster for twelve point five percent reimbursement. If you do additional work, your reimbursement amount is more. So right now, Underhill has all of these things and is at a rate of twelve point five if the disaster occurred. If we had a river corridor management plan, that would increase the amount to seventeen point five percent, which I think the maximum reimbursement is a million dollars. So it would, it would increase that likelihood to about fifty thousand more if we had the, if we met those requirements.
So what do we have to do to meet the requirements?
This is what it says, that protect river corridors from new encroachments, protect flood hazard areas from new encroachments and participate in the FEMA community rating system. Don't know exactly what that means.
Well, some of those mean like Chamberlain's, storage of brush near the river would not be allowed. And, you know, there, there are restrictions on what you can and cannot do in the floodplain area and especially within a certain distance of Browns River, for instance.
Okay.
So that's, that's a trade-off there, you know? We, we could pass stricter regulations there, but I don't think Paul would be too happy about it, you know? So it's, that's it basically, it's a trade-off. And then you look at the whole thing, I mean, that area has never flooded in anybody's recollection.
But it, it floods there all the time across the.
Not in.
Across the river.
The river has not actually flooded up into the plain. There's, the tributaries coming down. Yeah, they get sort of flooding and it goes over there all the time, but it hasn't been any destructive kind of flooding, so. And the Browns River has not come over the banks into that area. Marked out, bridges and that sort of thing, but.
But they could.
Yeah. They got replanting sticks. Got the new norm.
All right, well, yeah, I mean, the, the amount of rain that like Johnson got earlier in the year, if that would have been here, that's something to consider.
Yeah.
That's never happened, right? That much rain.
Oh, in Johnson?
Yeah. The, the moderate that Johnson got, if that was in Underhill, what would that?
Would be different.
Because that was, I think, like twice the rain we got, right? I don't know. We're in an area of unknowns here.
Right, and that's part of, you know, why we're reconsidering it, you know? Do we go on as normal or do we think about possible future and doing things?
Do we even have Johnson?
Johnson has been flooded twice basically, about fifteen years ago, same thing basically.
Well, and they had flooding like five years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very frequent.
Yep.
Was it five years ago?
Okay.
Seems very recent.
I spent three and a half hours trying to get home going around.
Well, you wouldn't remember that. You won't argue with that date.
Think I did every back row of Franklin Callengus.
It's got to be one.
So I, I guess, I guess the problem is, right, we don't have, we could say, oh, climate change is coming, everything's going to flood, but we don't know that, like David's saying. We don't have any good numbers yet as far as what the new normal is for flooding, right?
No.
Yeah.
So, you know, what we can go on is, you know, where are the identified floodplains and, you know, some of the tools that show what roads would flood in a fifty or hundred year episode and, you know, try to make sure those are really well.
Well, that comes with all the culvert inventory too. You know, and like on Stevensville, when they took out the culvert and put in black culvert, that made a huge difference of the flooding.
Didn't back up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are areas that are more.
As good as property and all and the hen house and stuff, it's not flooding the way it used to.
One more bit about this particular thing. If you look online, you can find Underhill's report, which is, you know, it shows that we have twelve point five of this ERAF rate. The other thing is, number five is a river corridor. We don't, we don't have a management plan there. There's nineteen structures right now that are in our identified flood hazard zone and only twenty-one percent of those are insured. So it just shows the, you know, the potential for damage in a significant flood period. These maps, the flood hazard maps, Brad has been working with, is it FEMA that reduced, that must be them that does the, the floodplain flood hazard maps and they are redoing that this year to make them more specific. But, you know, like, okay, well, I'm just talking about Chamberlain, so I'll just identify This is the, the area that is identified as potential flood area, which is not what I would think of at all. But it, you know, it includes a lot of things that, the soils and the, the size of the watershed and various things like that.
Where are you talking about now?
This is the Chamberlains location right there.
We don't see your mouse up there.
Oh, you can't? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I was talking like, see that right there?
I don't see where I'll begin with.
Yeah, so down here where the, the flood ready tools is, you see that yellow area all the way up through there? That's one of the, so the, the red is the significant floodplain and then the yellow is marred or whatever. And that flows right into where the road is there.
That's where it always floods?
Yes.
Or it used to more so than now?
Yeah.
By Chamberlains Barn and.
But it just helps explain some of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the area where Chamberlains are and the watershed to the, to the east of that is, is what runs down and comes over the road a little bit there.
So it doesn't show significant flooding over the banks of the Browns River there? I mean, the red shows the hazardous area?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not showing an awful lot of area involved.
Well, the other problem, of course, is right where we are, up here in Underhill Center.
Right, you know, we're putting more red up in that direction.
So that's one, one tool that's being updated and may be helpful for everything. And then the other tool, which I showed a while ago, is this one that V-Trans has for figuring out what roads might be vulnerable to different flooding. So the.
That doesn't look pretty.
I know. So the red areas are the real vulnerable ones and you can see that seg- segment of road, you know, that we've just been talking about is one of those that has the potential to be significantly impacted. Anyways.
There's very little green on that map below.
It is interesting to, to use this and kind of go in and see what roads are what, but this is the tool that Kurt Johnson is, is using to go around and identify culverts, culvert sizing, look at those areas that are the most vulnerable to see what, what might be able to be done. And then the other part of that that has to do with sort of planning ahead is, okay, if you have a major, if the road gets taken out and we, they can't use the trucks from Pleasant Valley Road down through because of the roads out, is, are there other locations in town where, where we should stockpile that major material so that you can fill in any, any problems there? That's the sort of thing that, that he's thinking about, just being strategic about where we have different equipment and materials. So with that quick and not very interesting, but what are some things that we can do? And what are some people that we might want to invite to allow us to be more informed? Here's some ideas I had. It seems like that geomorphic assessment is pretty outdated. Two thousand and five was a long time ago and I think our, our streams and, you know, cutting extra streams or planting extra streams, all of that probably has changed quite a bit. It, you know, is there a need to, to have that redone?
So if we wanted to redo that, we would have to go up to the select board and then they would have to put, you know, ask for the funds in the, in the town budget? Is that how that works or this is something the town would need to take on probably, right? Based on recommendations or is this, is that?
The way that it was done before was that a contractor is hired. It might be something that CCRPC is willing to, to do for the town. It would be a question we'd have to ask. If not, there, there may be funds through A and R that would allow us to get it done. I don't know the hows, but yeah, it would be something that would need some money. It might not take that long to do, I don't know.
Is Kurt Johnson, is he a volunteer or is he paid? He's the town road commissioner?
Infrastructure.
Okay.
He's not a, the commissioner, the road commissioner is.
Russ Clark.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So is he in tune with this, do you know, or is that, he must be?
We haven't talked about the river stuff. We've talked about the road and the road infrastructure, which is what he kind of is in charge of, yeah. Yeah, so a geomorphic assessment is a river thing. The Conservation Commission or another group to do riparian restoration, I think, I think that would be really worthwhile and I think if you get a lot of volunteers to, to help with that. Create a river corridor management plan. I don't know what that is exactly, but it may have to do with just what we're talking about, you know? This area needs restoring, this is, you know, it's on a, we got a plan for it. But it's something that the town plan had said we should look into. Learn about the results from Brad about the floodplain reassessment.
That means FEMA goes through and, and updates their floodplain map like every couple years.
I don't know how often. The last time it was done, I don't think Brad liked it very much because he's a surveyor and they, they just did this sort of.
Overview of a topo map, I think so.
Well, it isn't saying so that we can do it, but it may not be something we wanted to do.
What's that?
The.
The ERA.
Reassessment for seventeen.
Yes, that's right. I think looking at the river information would help inform us about what's there already and then what would be needed to, to get this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that twelve percent, twelve point five percent versus seventeen point five percent? Is that FEMA, is that the amount of money that FEMA would reimburse the town?
Right.
If we were to, if we were, we would get the extra money if we were to do these extra steps?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
So.
Does it also reimburse owners along the streams? Does it bother them? Anything to do with that?
If you don't have flood insurance, you're not really, you're out of luck.
Well, with this last one, that, I think that was one of the things FEMA was doing was, there were a lot of people that didn't have insurance, right? But because it's a disaster declaration, then I think the reimbursement is different?
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's not clear, but I think it does spread over to some private owner disasters also.
I think it would be good to have someone talk to us about that and see whether there's, you know, anything we can do, or should we just let the powers that be select board deal with it or whatever. The municipal town road assessment, we could have Brad or Kurt talk to us about where that's at. Doesn't seem like anything we need to be involved with, they've got a pretty good handle on what they're doing, but we may want to talk more about the whole erosion thing related to roadside ditching and whatnot. I talked to Kurt recently, and he's getting some training on a few different tools, like the road flooding one, and he'd like to come talk to us maybe in November about that, once he's kind of looked at the culverts and where things are there. So I think that might be a future thing that would be helpful to get his input on that. And then if we want to learn more about rivers and what we might be doing there, we could ask for a speaker like Rob Evans, who's the lead at the river program. There also is Stacy Palmeri, who I think she's out of Essex and deals with a lot of the watershed issues around here. And also Marion Waltz, who's part of the Climate Action Office of the state, to see what kind of funding opportunities they envision for building resilience in the town. So that's sort of what I have for you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's great.
A lot of work you've done on that.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, do you, what do you, like, if you were to think about all that you just showed us, is there anything in there that you think we need to, we should be addressing first or quickly or at all, or what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think the first three are ones that, in my opinion, are things we should look at. You know, do we want to update information so that we actually have good information? And is there a possibility of doing riparian restoration, and where would you do it, and how would you do it, and those sorts of things? And that all may be part of a river corridor management plan, but I don't even really know what that is and how the town would administer something like that, but it would be worth looking at, I think.
You may have talked about a problem that I see, and I used to see it firsthand when I worked for AOT, is these gravel dams that show up in the rivers. And it used to be the towns would mine them for gravel, and they'd put it on the roads, and then it would wash off the roads back in the river, and they'd do it. And a beautiful example of this is the gravel dam, it's an island actually, in the Winuski on the Conant Farm. So if you're crossing the Iron Bridge on two or on the interstate going north, you'll see this huge gravel island. And it drives the Conants crazy, because it's forcing the river around that, and every year they lose another 10 feet of pasture. And so that silt just washes into Lake Champlain. He never had that problem before the A and R said, you can't mine that, because that's natural. But everybody in Montgomery, Montgomery Center, Richmond, one other place now I can't think of, Bristol, and one town down in the south, they all had the same problem. And it was causing horrible damage. And I don't think we have that problem in Underhill, although we do have that problem in Jeffersonville, when you go on the Lower Valley Road, you will see, is that the settlement broke up there?
That's Seymour River.
Yeah, the Seymour River.
Okay, Seymour, settlement goes into the Seymour River. And you'll see the same thing, massive amounts of gravel, washes off the road into the river.
Yeah, right. Or it's washing out of the soil, basically, the silt pulling down.
And that might be Gates' property there, I know he's got his heifers in there sometimes, and he loses all the pasture.
Right, and, you know, I think that is a problem for the landowners that suffer that, you know, I think our role is to try to prevent all that sediment from getting into the stream, and, you know, if you manage that upstream and the river is stable, you wouldn't get that kind of sediment flowing down through.
Well, as long as we have gravel roads and torrential rains, all that stuff is gonna be in the river, and there's some mitigation we can do, but still.
I think a lot of that, that broke down towards Cambridge, I think a lot of it is just leaching out of the soil or being washed out of the surrounding soil, basically, and the silt and the fine silt is just going downstream, and the coarser gravel is all just building up that island there, or bank, basically, at this point. It's not necessarily coming off roads.
Well, part of it is.
Yeah.
But you're right, it's got a lot of different sources.
So even if it comes off the road and collects there, they still won't let you put it back on the road?
Well, A and R succumbed to political pressure in Montgomery. They got every legislator in Franklin County to say, this is nuts, because the village was severely flooded like twice in three years, or twice in four years, a lot of damage done. And there was, there were two gravel dams, one in a cornfield like a mile above the village, and that was washing away the cornfield, and then there was another one near the village. And so the state finally gave the approval to remove them and to keep them out of there. They haven't had a flood since, so it works.
Nature is not always gonna fail.
No.
So thank you, Sandy.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that couples are agenda items, unless there's something else that someone else would like to bring up at this point. If not, then I guess we're ready for a.
I got a question, I guess. Going forward, what is going to be at the top of the list on things that we need to do?
Well, last meeting, Brian was trying to kind of prioritize what we would be working on, and, so I don't have a top of my head, you know, what he was, what the issues were.
I think it was this hydrology resilience, it was zoning districts and maps, but that needed to happen a little later, once we have other data in, and then plugging away at the bylaws.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, details. And I'm sorry I wasn't able to put things together for the non-conforming lots, but I hope to do that for next meeting. It's a very confusing description in the regs, and a lot of it is just taking chunks out of the state statutes, and it just doesn't seem awful coherent.
So that's what you want to look at at the next meeting, is the non-conforming?
Yeah, I would like to look at that for the next meeting, basically.
To be made that better.
Right. Sorry, I wasn't able to get to it this time. And actually, we've taken up our time pretty well, and that was very, very good, Sandy. So thank you. All right. So any other questions?
No.
Then I guess we're ready for a motion.
To a jerk.
Yeah, call in favor.
Aye. All right.
Cool.